Fourth, we'll call the meeting to order. We have two items under general business, sports complex and then the fairgrounds improvement. And with that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Carter, Am Randy and whoever.
Myself.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this evening, we're gonna start with the sports complex as mentioned. And although Randy and I talk quite a bit from time to time today, we're, I've asked Courtney Daniels to come up and speak a little bit because she's put in a lot of research and I think she even has a guest here today that I was improperly introduced to earlier. But if, if the board would allow Courtney to come to the podium and begin the presentation, I think we're ready to go on that.
Sounds good Courtney, come on up.
All right, now I may have to pull this thing down a little bit because I'm short. Or maybe I'm loud enough y'all can hear me.
You got a bucket.
I know, you forgot. You're right, you're with me, you're right. They're with me. Well, good afternoon.
Down a little more.
Sit down, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, good afternoon, so I'm here to talk a little bit about the ball fields, sports complex, see if we can move forward. I believe we can all agree on the importance of the recreation, youth sports and parks and not only what it plays into our youth, but also supporting, serving and improving the community. I think we feel that a multi-use field for this area isn't just a want, it's a need. The possibilities are endless. Having them, multi-use will be able to provide sufficient needs and fundamentals for our youth and not just one sport, but two. So we're also looking at doing baseball, softball and soccer on the fields as well. The property that we have looked at can be looked at into two parts, an upper and a lower part. If you'll pull up the lower part first, I think that's part one, yes. Okay, so this is our lower portion, this is behind, whoops, Community College. So the lower portion down here, excuse me, is about a 40-foot incline as far as based on the raise of the land. I'm okay right now? Yeah, I'm good.
He's her pointer.
Oh, that would be beneficial. Okay, it's perfect, so let me get it on here. So this portion right here is the part that we're looking at. So this is the barn and below. I think all in all, the field that we have kinda compared to, it's in a rural area similar to ours, is in Mecklenburg, if you'll pull that up. It's about an eight and a half acre field all around. When I pulled up this field, the guy that kinda done it on our property, he also included this parking lot as well in the eight acres. So this is a 300-foot field, these are all 300, or 250, excuse me. And that will accommodate a Top Gun tournament, if we want to bring tournaments into the area. So these fields can be used not just for our youth, but to bring outsiders into the community. And I think more so based on the need of the field and the want of the field is just last year for baseball and softball, we had 303 kids. Soccer, we had 125 kids. And we have two facilities that are of use, we have the high school softball field and then we have Davis Field. But we only run and take care of one of those fields. So managing that many kids on those fields is hard to do. And our goal is to bring up youth to be successful and to provide them with sufficient, you know, things that they can have.
Do you want to turn one of those lights off, please?
If you'll go back to the upper portion of it, I think it's Ball Field too, I think.
There you go.
Yeah, so this is the lower. Okay, so this is the upper portion of the land. It is a wider area, so it would accommodate a little bit more, but there is also a little bit more grading that comes along with that. But all in all, the land itself as a whole has multiple ways that we can access it. So even if we do the top or the bottom, there's multiple places that we can have an entrance into it. Just a second, I'm sorry. So I think the whole point of having, being here today is we just, we want to move forward with an RFQ if we can, to give us the opportunity to see what's doable, to have an engineer come out, say, okay, this land is, we can work with this, we can incorporate multiple things with this land, get some numbers and see if we can make it happen, is I think our ultimate goal. I've got a few engineers that were already recommended if we do move forward with it. Do you guys have any questions? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, are you looking at the bottom part or the top part?
So the bottom, so the bottom part is a smaller area and it could potentially cause some problems as far as getting in like retaining laws and making sure that everything fits safely and, because our goal with this is not for it to last three years or five years, it's to last 25 years. So it's, you know, my kids' kids can use this and access this. So the possibility of doing it on the topper portion of it, we have a little more room, whether that be to add in parking or, you know, later on down the road, something else, whether it be a separate soccer field or, you know.
Would it fit in the lower part?
It would, yes.
Okay. And with that question, would it fit in the lower part with the new high school expansion? Because I know they're going to use a little.
Go back to the lower portion of the picture. So I know that the high, let me get this thing on, Lord, I'm not good with this, y'all. Okay, so I know the high school does have access and does use this portion of the land, but to my knowledge, based on the land that we're looking at that kinda runs like this, they are not. So it would not affect that expansion.
Question, while you got this picture here.
Yes.
You see the highest, the Vogue ed buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Then there's a green barn right there.
Mm-hmm.
What's that solid red line that comes from the top of the screen, oh, that line right there?
That shows our property line.
Property line, for who?
For us, for the county.
Where's that green barn?
It's on us.
It's who?
It's ours.
No, it's not ours, it's encroaching on the county's owned property.
Okay.
According to the red line.
Yes.
As well as the, what I now understand to be the Cal maternity ward.
Yeah.
Which is the green area beside the green roof.
Yes, I was informed of that today.
As far as I am aware, there is nothing that I have found that allows for any type structure to be placed on that county-owned portion of that property. Now, if there's some verbal or handshake from years back, maybe that exists, but I'm not aware of that.
And there's a creek that runs right through there that really comes all the way down through the town of Sparta eventually. That's the Feeder Creek.
Yes.
Comes out of base of Sam Brown's mountain.
Mm-hmm.
But I am guessing with the identification of this structure on the county-owned piece of property that our committee that's assigned to the schools, which I believe both of you are here, I am certain that that will be brought up in some upcoming meeting as to the howabouts and the whereabouts of how that became.
Thank you.
So do we know how much acreage is on, like from the green building down in that area there? We don't have a clue, do we?
Um, let me see here.
There was one draw and one other up, that was 15 acres, I believe.
But yeah, it's like 15.9 acres.
But I was just wondering if we know how much that lower area is below the BDC center.
No, I don't have a GIS of that as far as acreage wise goes.
That looks like it would be awfully cramped if we tried to put it in that part.
Mm-hmm.
Also have a problem with the noise, the neighborhood, those houses over there may object also.
I mean, they could, but, you know, that would be a different day for a different topic, but anything's possible.
Anticipate that they would object to that, we're gonna hear from them. And that's a lot, that's a lot of dirt to move. If we go to the upper, that's even more dirt.
It is, yes.
A question, has anyone considered the Dale Duncan property back behind BB and T? For sale for 20 years. The swimming pool, people looked at that.
Well, to try and bring it together.
Right.
So the board fully remembers when we had a group look at multiple sites for the swimming pool. And I'm not being critical, I'm being factual. So we started out, we'll just say 10, and then we added a couple more along the way and here we are today. So what, what we learned from that, or what I learned from that, is sometimes first, the first thought that you have, you need to exhaust. And in this effort, the whole reason that the ball fields came to, to discussion at this area was to help tie that into what would ultimately become a recreational complex, which you already have your, your school fields there, you already have what we had talked about for a swimming pool location, so to incorporate it into more of a complex, the discussion was, how do we do that and how do we utilize the seed money that was provided by the state to come up with numbers, which the legislators indicated that they would like to have in the springtime. So when we started diving deeper into this, there are a number of other sites out there, granted, but they're not, one, they're not adjacent to where we've talked about the swimming pool being. Some are close, some are farther away. I personally find it difficult for me to have to explain to the state why I'm using their seed money to look at a pool and multiple fields when they do not connect. Because then I believe I am walking that crooked line on how to, to get that understood. So I have tried to focus the efforts, at least until this point, on a, a location of one proximity. Because if you also recall, I believe the comments have been made several times, that with the hopeful assistance of our legislators, what they are looking for are numbers. And this provides us with the quickest, you know, ability to provide numbers. Now, true, they may be higher, higher numbers, but we don't have to go into negotiating for property or we don't have to get a lease or, you know, some type of agreement on a piece of property or sit and haggle over it. This is something the county owns and today is just to find out if, you know, I guess later on your agenda, there's a little bit of discussion about it, but just trying to incorporate it into one at this point.
Thanks, Mr. Carter. Is there anything else that I can answer?
I mean, I could see it feasibly being to the right there.
Yeah.
But, I mean, you're not going to have to take off a whole mountain.
There's a lot of, and, yeah, I mean, and I don't disagree, there is a lot of grading to be done. But like Mr. Carter said, if we're wanting to keep it all together and if it's easier to be able to get funding to have everything we want, then at first, I think this might be our first option to explore, to move forward with. And then, you know, I mean, and it, it keeps everything together. And once we get, you know, get through and if we get an RFQ to move, move forward, then, you know, we may have somebody come in and say, yes, that's great, or no, that's not great. And then that way we know and that, you know, we either look into other options, because we want to be able to provide the county with everything if we're able to. But I think that initially to start off with, this is our best option.
I think one thing where the Davis Field is now, years ago, that was part of the mountain.
Mm-hmm.
And that dirt was moved to build the new gymnasium by the noise. The timber was sold off. And then all that dirt which created Davis Field went down to the new high school where it is now.
Yeah.
And I think Timmy and I've asked, and I think Michael's asked, the school system, how many, how much dirt are they gonna need when they start into their building project? And they haven't been told how many yards yet, but they're gonna need some dirt.
Yeah.
So if we have, if we do have excess dirt, you know, maybe it's something the school could use.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, and, you know, not only that, but if we do move forward and it does, in the future, become a reality, I mean, there are also opportunities that we can source out locals to help with the facility, to help, you know, whether it be timber cutting, grading, all of those things.
On any other questions? Michelle, comments, questions? Timmy? Mr. Carter and Heather, comments?
Yes, my question for Heather is to, to go back and remind the board about, because we've talked about the part of situation on and off, so maybe a quick refresher on that.
I haven't heard back from my contact on the grant yet. He was gonna do some more research to determine exactly how many grants we had that were still outstanding, because he is under the impression that it's more than one. So it's possible that if we end up with a pool in that corner, that left corner right there, and this being on that upper part of the property, he did say that the option was available to transfer, at least the one grant that we have, which goes through, I think, 2032, because it would be like to like, so pool to pool. On anything else, I'm not really sure, but then obviously, we might be able to use some dirt where we could fill in where the current pool is and potentially cover over that property to be able to use it for something else, whether it's, you know, I don't think it would be tennis again, but if it's pickleball or whatever else. If the, if the grant was removed from that property, then we're not restricted in any way and it could just be parking if we wanted or something. Right now, it has to be open for public recreation.
Recreation, yes, yes.
So, you know, we're limited because the school initially had wanted to use it for ball fields that were enclosed or softball. The problem was it wouldn't be open to the public. So that was denied right away unless it was open. That's not what the school wanted, so they've kinda moved away from that project on that property. So now we're basically just looking to see, is it possible for us to move that grant to another location where we have a pool and then not have any restrictions on that property? So we're in that process and they're still looking. Of course, I've let them know that we probably will have no idea if we'll do a pool right now until we have information from the state regarding funding sometime maybe in, in April or early May. So they're okay with that timeframe. The first thing that they're gonna do though is declare that pool obsolete, because we can't use it and we're not gonna fix it because of the cost associated with that. So there are some things that will still need to be done for where we end up putting that pool, but it's not onerous, it's just a couple extra steps that we're gonna have to take in order to take care of that.
Carter, I think part of this discussion is, and it'll come up in the agenda, is about the RFQ.
If the board determines, and we've now talked about this for a meeting or so, so it's up for action tonight, if the board determines that it wants to move forward, one, with the concept of utilizing this particular site as the footprint for a potential sports complex swimming pool area, that's what you're going to be asked tonight on the agenda. Now, keep in mind, everything that Courtney said is accurate, you know, 300 feet of, you know, from one contour to the top contour is a lot of dirt to move. I mean, a lot of dirt. And whether, whether we were building a high school, you could probably create another Allegheny County with some of the dirt. It's gonna be a lot of dirt right there. But I guess that's the first consideration. If, if there are thoughts about moving the location to another site, honestly, I don't know that we're gonna have the time to, to bring someone in, evaluate those sites, determine which top three sites are most adequate for the application and get all of that done before what was identified as having the numbers submitted for consideration by legislation. Now, I'm not saying that this is the best site, I'm just saying it's the most convenient and with the timeframe that we're under, perhaps the only one feasible to even attempt. But that's what you'll be presented with later tonight, because if you don't do it, you don't do it. And there's no use thinking about it in six months, because it's too late to get the numbers submitted. And the only way it would happen at that point was straight out of the tax from right here in Allegheny County.
Do you have any idea how long, if we put the RFQ out tomorrow, how long before we get an answer and then how long before they could do, somebody could do the study?
RFQs don't take long. RFQs are just a request for qualifications from a qualified engineer architect firm. They have those laying in their boxes to send out every day. So you could put a two to three week turnaround on that and get your RFQs back. You then have to go through a process, and that's through a ranking system, and you have to take those RFQs and there's six or seven criteria you have to use as a score sheet and you rank those and score them accordingly. And whoever your top firm is, that collectively, if you have a committee or however, you've done it as a committee in the past, but if you want to do it as a committee, then you take collectively, who was your top choice through that committee and you, you talk to them and you say, hey, guys, you were our top choice, we'd like for you to come in and talk. And they do. And they talk about at that point what they submitted in their RFQ and they'll answer a few questions for you, but you can ask them how much and you can ask them certain things or certain things off limits. So then if you decide, yeah, you know, not only do you, you present well, but you look pretty good, we're gonna, we're gonna further engage with you. And that's when you can start talking about numbers and timeframes and all that good stuff. So they're gonna tell you, because I assume we're gonna tell them, hey, we're under a timeline and we appreciate everything you're doing and what you may do, but we need you to flip this around in a month. So they, you give them a timeline, I'm gonna say you give them probably till, you have them come to your mid-February board meeting to make their final presentation and that gives you a couple of weeks to get your thoughts out of the whatever, because as I understood it, you had to have your numbers in by mid-March to April. And then you have your numbers, you can submit to your legislators for consideration and however, you know, they proceed from there and you sit around and wait.
You think if we're lucky, maybe the end of February, early March?
Or submitting it to the state?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you, but you don't do that until you take the first step, which comes up later tonight.
That's why it's important we get started this evening.
And if, and I'd be glad I look, but there's a lot of smart people in this room, but I'm just telling you, if you get into the property searches and how about this one and what about that one, just don't even think about it, don't, don't, don't plan on building it this, this go-around, because it's gonna take too long, so.
Other questions?
Courtney, I don't know if you want to introduce your guest.
Yes, so this is Chris Philing. He actually works with Astroturf, so he is familiar with natural grass fields and artificial. So he can kinda give you an idea or answer questions about the land, maybe a little better than I can. When it comes to the land, I'm kinda just doing facts based off what property shows, incline. You know, I've spoke with, we've had a couple people come up just to look at the property from a couple of different places and as far as like drainage and runoff and retaining laws and all that, so Chris, if you would like to come up here and speak for a second? Thank you.
Good evening, guys. Be glad to ask, answer any questions you have. I have been doing athletic fields now for about 12 years, travel all across the country, seen many fields built. This is not a, not a problem really, as far as moving dirt, we move dirt every day. We build fields, you'd be amazed at some of the locations we put athletic fields. You mentioned cutting the timber, great idea. I will get somebody to cut timber and grade at the same time for, for, for part of the timber. It's a great idea to make money. But just imagine having a sports complex on a Saturday and Sunday afternoon at a baseball tournament with a swimming pool next door. Imagine how many kids would be going to the swimming pool after getting done playing baseball or playing soccer. It's a great idea to have it close. We don't have a lot of those fields out there that, that have a swimming pool close by. We have many multi-use fields, we have, we have a five-field complex down in Mount Pleasant, fantastic facility. We have a 16-field complex down in Panama City Beach, Florida. Athletic fields are very important for kids. We just done two soccer fields in Weston, Florida. They have 5,000 kids playing soccer in one community, but it gives those kids the opportunity to play soccer that normally they wouldn't have. But this is very, very doable, for sure.
You know, you're talking about this opportunity for the kids. Allegheny County, you know, we utilize basically the school's property. And with the numbers that Randy is, is presenting, we don't have enough practice fields, we don't have enough playing fields. The general public's always saying, we need something for the children to do. This sports complex, to me, is a perfect fit to give our people, young people, something to do, plus the older people. Years back when we used to have slow pitch softball, we played up here five or six nights a week up at Allegheny.
Right here at the high school, played many, many, many games.
Yeah. And I mean, that's an economic development. People spend the night, they go to restaurants, they go grocery stores, wherever. So it's, it's just not to play on, it's also an incentive. It's also an incentive to bring people to the county to spend money.
Exactly. And I'll use just for instance here, we have, I take care of all of Cal Ripken Jr.'s fields. He has 27 across the nation. Myrtle Beach, the Ripken Experience in Myrtle Beach, they have nine baseball fields. Of course, we don't have the people at Myrtle Beach does, but in the summertime, they hold an 18-week camp for baseball from 6U up to 18U. They have a minimum of 68 teams per week. That's $10,500 per team. So each week, they're making $680,000 just on entry fee. Now, that does include the motel fees, but that's it. And to play baseball, they're guaranteed five games, and that's per week, $680,000. And they're busy for 18 straight weeks at Myrtle Beach. That's just one complex.
And realistically, that's not, I mean, that's, it will not happen in our community.
Exactly.
But it will bring in revenue for our community.
If we have 20 teams on a weekend, the possibilities are endless.
350 per team.
Yeah, I was going to add.
We have another complex in Pigeon Forge, six fields. They got so busy, we've just added five new ones at the city of Pigeon Forge for the Ripken Experience. They get too many teams, the six fields didn't hold them all. So now they have 11 fields in Pigeon Forge.
And one last thing to add, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Just in a comparison, Grayson County, which is right next to us, they have four fields. Now, they're not together, but they do have four fields that they play on. They held four tournaments this year, so between the months of, you know, May and now. They charged $350 per team for registration, and then they charge $10 per head for admission to be a spectator. The first tournament they had, they had 15 teams. Tournament two, they had 21. Tournament three, they had eight. Tournament four, they had 16 teams. They had 4,000 total players, so 60 teams total. They had $21,000 in team fees. They had 1,600 paying spectators, so it was $16,000. And then their concessions, they made $12,000 just in concessions. So based on those numbers and Grayson's teams, as far as this year in comparison to our department, baseball and softball, they only had 200. So we had 100 more kids than they did just in baseball and softball. Soccer, they had 63, so we doubled what they had in soccer. You know, so to bring in a complex that can accommodate all of these, you know, it's only going to get greater. It's only going to improve.
Not only that, you know, let's not forget that it creates jobs, too. You've got to have umpires, you've got to have people take care of the fields, you've got to have people in concession stand, you know, people have to eat at restaurants. It means more restaurants. It means more food, more gas.
Hotels.
Hotels.
Hotels, everything.
It's good for the, it's good for the whole county.
It is.
And local businesses, yeah, just not for parks and rags.
John, any questions?
None.
Timmy? Carter, go ahead.
Absolutely. And I'm going to refer to him as my dad because that's how I was introduced to him.
It's hard to say grass even at 30.
Capitalizing on your experience, I know there's been some discussion about grass versus turf, and I know what you do. But could you just give the board kind of an idea of the difference in the maintenance or some of the associated things that go with grass versus turf? Because ultimately, that's going to be a consideration if we move forward in how this thing works out.
Most definitely. We have a sports complex pretty close in Abington, just built a four-field complex. They're all, sent all natural grass fields with clay infield. Beautiful complex, but if it rains, they don't play. That's an issue with turf and with natural grass. We have a complex in Elizabeth Town, Tennessee, Elizabethan, Tennessee, 16 fields. They are natural grass and synthetic. So we have a synthetic infield and a natural grass outfield. The natural grass infield is tough. Clay is tough to keep up. It's expensive. It gets worn down pretty quick. It's a continuous maintenance. Synthetic turf, not a lot of maintenance. Even on our baseball fields, the mound and batter's boxes are all turf. We have an insert that we can take out batter's boxes. They're Velcroed in, so not a lot of maintenance on a turf field. And you can play. If it's raining, you can play. It doesn't matter as long as it's not lightning. The turf fields are so, so much use, play anytime. Soccer, football, we can stripe lines. We can do anything with the turf field, and it can be played on at any time. As far as cost on a natural grass field, mowing, fertilizing, the outfield doesn't get used much, so having a natural grass outfield, it's not a lot of extra, not a lot of extra maintenance. Most of the cost for a natural grass field is in the infield with the clay, with the pitcher's mounds, got to be built. I was talking to someone today, we've got a pitcher's mound to rebuild in, down at Deaton's Park, and it's going to cost about $20,000 to have a new pitcher's mound built. So it gets expensive. They wear out three to five years. But bringing the fields to the county, you know, we can look at doing natural grass fields for three, five years to get some income in to do a synthetic turf field. We don't have to do synthetic right off the bat. We can start it and then moving forward from there. Cost to come in, once the fields are built, that's where most of the cost is going to be. To turf an infield is going to be about $125,000, to turf one infield. To do a whole field, it gets a little more expensive because most of your square footage is in the outfield, so. But, you know, the good thing about turf field is it can be played on at any time. If you get a little rain, you can play on it. You get a lot of rain, it's going to drain quick.
As far as like expectancy over the fields, I know you said that natural grass field, three to five years before you kind of need any, oh, I'm sorry. I know you said with expectancy for the fields, like life expectancy, you said three to five years for a natural grass field. So what about artificial turf?
If we're doing just an infield on artificial turf, we're looking 10 to 12 years before we have to do any major maintenance, switching out. Now, we will do some small maintenance, like side zone areas, second base, first base wears out a little bit, but we're talking, you know, $5,000 to change out a slide zone at second base. May have to do it after six or seven years, but for basically infield, 10 to 12 years before we're having to take it out and replace it. To do that, it's going to cost us probably about $75,000 to replace the whole infield. And we can do that in just a matter of six days or something, replace it.
Question on softball, what's mostly their infield? What plays in softball?
Softball is amazing. Most of the college softballs are going turf as well. We just finished Marshall University softball, turned out fantastic. Campbell University, all turf. Most colleges, 80% of college baseball and softball is AstroTurf product. We've been very fortunate at work with a lot of people. Even college baseball, most of the fields, 95% of the fields are all turf, pitcher's mound and batter's box included. We do have a few fields that want to stay with the natural field on a pitcher's mound. So we've got like University of Kentucky, they have a natural pitcher's mound, a clay pitcher's mound, but everything else is turf. We got the Toronto Blue Jays, their whole field is turf except the running lane and the batter's box. So everything else is turf. The infield is turf, the outfield is turf. Turf is becoming the number one thing in America as far as athletics go. You can, not only on a baseball field, you take the outfield, you can turn it into a soccer field, you can turn it into a football field, play a lot of recreational departments. They rent the fields out for ultimate frisbee competitions. We have Smith River Sports Complex down in Danville. They rent it out for the national frisbee championships. They have a lot of major colleges, UCLA, Brown, a lot of those schools come down for the frisbee championships. We have a baseball complex in Savannah, Georgia. They use theirs for a kickball committee. They play, they have 130 kickball teams. You mentioned softball earlier. It's just like a league, a kickball league for kickball players. And they play 130 teams, they rent the fields out for that. So not only just for recreational sports here in the county, but a lot of use can be played on these fields. Natural grass tends to wear out. If we play, you know, 15 games on a weekend, you know, they tend to wear out a little bit on natural grass and clay, so something else to keep in mind, too, moving forward.
Okay, thank, I mean, that's good information. That's something that we'll need to think about. Most if we're fortunate enough to get the funding, you know, to do the project. Anything else, Michael?
I think if we're done with these two, maybe give Randy a few minutes, gather his thoughts. If you have anything to add to it, Randy?
I would only have one thing and something Bobby brought up on softball. One of the plans that I did have, one of the things that I did have in mind, if we was to be fortunate enough to get the rec fields, is where Davis Field is now, is bring back adult league softball. Because right now, I mean, I've been asked that a lot since I've been here, but I don't have a field open to be able to do that. So that's another avenue that we would actually have is to be able to create some recreation for adults in the county, which is a little difficult to do right now, you know. But I do think that a major step forward for the county, for the kids, to have this facility and have something to be proud of and be able to bring other teams and other people into the county, if it's not for the restaurants, gas stations, Airbnb motels, shops on Main Street. I mean, it'd serve the whole county, not just the town as a part of it, but, you know, it would do the whole county. That's what I've got.
Thank you. Carter? If there are...
Good.
...other questions or comments? We'd like to thank you, Chris. Thank you for the information, Courtney, for the presentation. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you for bearing with me.
We'll go ahead and close this section, this portion of the work session, and you're more than welcome to stay or you can leave, and then we're going to start on fairgrounds. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Carter, go ahead.
So the second portion of the work session today is a continuation of discussions that we have also had previously about potential improvements to the fairgrounds. And again, I go back to what I have said earlier about when we had some of our legislators here, we took those fine gentlemen to the fairgrounds to talk about some things. And I believe the consensus of the board at that time was to utilize a portion of this work session to talk about what improvements we'd like to be seeing at the fairgrounds. And I'd made the comment that, you know, we talk a lot amongst ourselves how this might be a good idea or that might be a good idea, but collectively, we don't, we've never come to what I would call a unified thought process on it. So today, I hope that we can throw out ideas. And I know that we also, in addition to our Board of Commissioners, we have two members from our Fairgrounds Advisory Committee, and of course, we have our rec department here represented as well. So I think we have some, you know, the potential for some good ideas and good dialect here as it results to the fairgrounds and who, a lot of us are here to try to make notes so that we can incorporate these ideas and put them into some kind of compilation that we can present. But it all starts today. So with that in mind, Mr. Chairman, I'll either turn it back over to you or you can, we can go around the room, however you wish to conduct a meeting. I just think it's important for us to talk about ideas, to talk about what improvements we'd like to see, how we'd like to see those incorporated, and begin that process.
Thank you. Start down with John. Any comments or questions?
None.
Michelle?
Well, I think that our fairgrounds has come a long way. I still think it has, you know, a lot of potential to go. I would like to see, you know, improved communications between the Fairgrounds Advisory Board and the Commissioners. I would like to see some, of course, we're going to work on getting the kitchen in there, but some landscaping, some updating to the building to make it more appealing. I would like to see us have maybe an animal barn down near the exhibition area is down at the pole barn, out near it. We got a great facility. I just think that we need to spiffy it up a little bit and add to it and just keep on growing it. We're so blessed to have that facility, and there's so many communities that would love to have something like that. So I just think that we all just need to try to work together to make it the best it can be. I mean, this year, I think, Randy, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think that we've had more events this year than we've ever had at the fairgrounds.
Anything that I've looked back at and saw that keeps us?
Oh, that's my comment.
Timmy?
Yeah, there's lots of different things. Two or three things. One is, we've talked about this before, the center part of where the dirt is. How do we, you know, we have all these different deals coming in, whether it's rodeos or whether it's crash-up derby, whatever, some of that kind of stuff. Figuring out a way to how we can make that better to where we, if we have a large group that wants to come in and use our fairgrounds, is it going to be suitable for them? More parking area. We've got a cupboard over there that we need to get checked to see if it will hold people driving through. I noticed, too, through my observation, through the summary is, you know, again, it'd be nice to have more covered picnic area for people to sit and eat. Possibly some paving, but paving creates, as we've talked about before, it creates a lot of runoff issues, but, you know, there might be some areas that might be beneficial for paving. That was all those, and of course, the stage. Age is, I believe it's better than it has been in years past because it's covered, it's protected, but it's a barrier to move around when it needs to be. So that's another thing, you know, it's a, but I'm like Michelle, there's lots of opportunity over there, but, and have an opportunity to get some monies from the state. It would be great to, you know, to make it better in some of those areas, like the traffic pattern, the parking, some of those things, even those little logistical things would be very, very helpful, getting people in and out there. That's it.
Hey, thank you. Some of the things that, you know, that I've been thinking about that, and talking with the other Commissioners and the Ag Advisory Board, that the idea of adding on to the show barn, the, Timmy and I, a couple times have talked to the high school about them providing the labor. A few years ago, before COVID started, we almost had a project worked out. A few years ago, before COVID started, we almost had a project worked out where, uh, several local vendors were gonna provide the materials, and the high school was gonna provide the labor, so it was very minimal cost, but when COVID came along, that sort of killed that deal. But, uh, Timmy and I have talked to Ms. Yancy, and we're gonna have another meeting in a couple of weeks, and I think we should go back and ask, uh, if there's any interest in the school, uh, maybe providing some of the labor, and the county, you know, trying to work out a deal with some of these local vendors on material, if we have to bite at cost, or whatever, or if we can get some of it donated. Timmy mentioned the stage, I think the school's been up there working on the stage, uh, for the last few weeks, and it, you know, they've done, uh, it looks like they've done a lot of work on it. The parking area, when we have a, a real big event, parking is almost our number one concern. For people, uh, with, with young children, they're pushing baby carriages, or whatever, pushing over that gravel is, is a chore for them. Then when you have older people who are trying to walk on the gravel, or go with a wheelchair, that's a problem for them. All of this, I think, depends upon what our local representatives are gonna be able to do for us, and part of this work session is to start coming together with what we consider some key projects, that we can ask for some financial help from the state. One, uh, I was over, over at the fairgrounds this weekend, and Randy and I have talked about how the, where the mud slings and the demolition derbies and the rodeo, that water stands in that area in its mud. Well, with, we hadn't had a lot of rain here the last few days, but there's a lot of mud that's washed out onto the ground, onto the driveway, and there's rocks as big as your fist that are now out on our parking area. So I can imagine what some of these people, if they're on a rodeo and they get bucked off, or fall, or hit an elbow, or something, you know, that's, that's not an ideal situation. So that whole infield's gonna have to be somehow improved. Lighting at the fairgrounds, I think that needs some, some improvement. The electrical outlets and the plumbing for the whole fairgrounds, the campground area where the finlers convention is, uh, I've always been told electricity and water don't mix, but you go up there, when it's raining or something, you've got umpteen electric cords plugged into additional electric cords, and some of them are soaking wet. So I think electricity needs to be looked at, uh, and David Spicer would be, in my opinion, if David Spicer could work with Blue Ridge Electric, or whoever, maybe come up with some type of plan. The black building, uh, we're gonna see some renovation with the, uh, addition of the kitchen being installed for the county, uh, to prepare meals. Uh, I know there's been several meetings, uh, with Deb, with the Agriculture Advisory Committee as to questions that they have. I know that, uh, Michelle and, and part of the Ag had a meeting the other day, I don't know what came of that meeting, but we need, uh, to explain, I don't know if they need it explained again, I thought it's been explained several times. I know that Deb was here with a meeting with Mr. Carter, Randy, David Spicer, whoever, I thought it was explained then. Uh, I don't know how many times we have to go over that, but, uh, I'd be willing to even go up there and walk through the black building, take David Spicer, you, whoever wants to go and show these people what, what the plans are. I only see that as an improvement to the entire building. I hope that with funding, uh, air conditioning can be looked at, heating can be improved. Uh, there again, I don't know if we need more electrical outlets inside the building. Uh, there's always been some discussion about the four large doors that are in the building, do we need all four of them, can we do away with one, two, or whatever? The heating has to be improved for the whole building. That, you, with all that cement and the brick, or concrete around the building, it's hard to heat. Then we get to scheduling, and I think Randy's gonna talk some today about scheduling, uh, for big events. Some people need two or three days, or a week before their event, they need some type of time period after the event to clean up. And there again, who cleans up after some of these events, especially in the, the show barn, where, uh, you know, the cattle leave a lot of urine, and llamas, and sheep, cats, no, no cats, okay? But those are things that need to be ironed out, 'cause it costs the county to send Randy or whoever up there.
Me too.
Okay.
She helps.
You know, they're being paid by the county, by the taxpayers, to go up there and clean up a mess that somebody else has made. So, I mean, these are just some of the functions, uh, that need to be addressed, and I'm also curious about how the money comes into the fairgrounds, who gets the money, who gets part of the money, who gets all of the money? Is it county property? Does the money, part of it come to the county, any of it come to the county? And I think Heather may have some comments or questions about that. So, I mean, that's just part of the list, but there again, this, this discussion needs to be finalized sometime the end of February, early March, so we can present a plan to, uh, to Senator Heiss and Representative Pickett. With that being said, Michael, any?
The only thing that I would mention, in addition to the 16 items that I wrote down from, from you guys thus far, is the sizing of the water lines, and, and I'm talking about the main line that runs through there. If, you know, there's been occurrences where we haven't had water, we haven't, uh, there, there are infrastructure things that I think we need to look at. I think that we've expanded our internet capabilities, which was one of the concerns that I had heard early on, but I think we ought to also look at our, our water supply. And that also would be of an assistance to the fire training facility, to bring that, uh, back into what would be a more acceptable use, and maybe usage of that facility, but looking at the, at the water supply. Now, I'd, I'd like, if, if it's okay with the board, um, as I mentioned, we have two members from our, from our Fairgrounds Advisory Group, I, I think we should allow them the opportunity to, to talk about some ideas they may have, and then round it out with, with Randy and Courtney, so that we can, you know, as a, as a, as a united group, we can talk about the, the issues, or the improvements, or things that we can look at collectively. So I would ask the board to consider to allow, first of all, either, either Deb or Jimmy the opportunity, and then we can just work our way over, if that's okay.
Sure. Jimmy?
I'll go ahead and start. First of all, is appreciated, of what you're doing, trying to do. I've got some, some heartaches, okay? There's no physical possible way that your fairgrounds committee, as it stands, can operate the way that it needs to, unless the communication comes back together. We have to have your minutes of what you discussed, you requested our minutes from what we have discussed. We're trying to do everything in our power to itemize, prioritize what we need at the fairgrounds that you folks don't see. Number one, you've hit on a lot of it. Number one being power. Every event holder that has a big event, like you said, plugs into everything. Then you start tripping breakers left and right. So the power itself should be a top priority for all of us. The water was a big issue. The sewer was a big issue. You've already discussed 90%. My main is, my main is gripe, if you will. We've got volunteers to donate time, want, want to donate equipment, to get some of this stuff done. We've not had that relationship to let this stuff happen. Several folks have loved to give money to help you all, but it is. So we need to, we need to start getting some of this stuff. I had a contract guy with DOT, who looked at our pipe. We have brought up the issue of why we use the second entrance, as you first come in to the, to the fairgrounds. The pipe is failing, two holes on both sides of it, and from past experience, you put a heavy truck on it, heavy vehicle, it's got a void up under it, so it's gonna fall. Had some of that already in the works, to try to save the county some money, get some of this volunteerism that wants to do, on our committee, to do this stuff. Well, then the horse barn was burnt down. We don't know this that's going on. So we already had plans to talk to the school, to take that building because of the donation and the history of it, do a blueprint of it, that thing moved where the barn is, somewhere out there in that flat. The natural design that it was, so that you honor those folks, keep their memory going on that has donated, and, and put that stuff out there. All of a sudden, it was burnt. So those are the issues. The committee has it in their mouth, being honest. Communications between these two, our liaison, you're appointed, has to bring that stuff back to you. Have to know what your plans are, so that we don't overlap in things. Make people, because you got to talk about the, the gravel, and the wheels start turning, because that's kind of my criteria, you know, working dirt and stone and all this. Got several folks that I can call upon to get equipment, so and so forth. Said, uh, be all right if I get your motor garage? Yes, sir. Well, how much is it gonna cost? Ain't gonna cost you, or the fairgrounds, a dime, as long as you give me a little bit of PR. You've got a golden opportunity, folks, we all, golden opportunity, to figure back off The pie festival has brought in numerous people. The first one was a success and a flop, so to speak, because we ran out of pie. But when you stop and look at what happened with your volunteer organization that put this stuff together, where did we park? Did not one car that I know of go up on top of the hill where we used to have to park? Went across the road to Woody's. There's a huge pile of dirt down there, talking about the grounds, huge pile of dirt that come out of the pond, that's piled up. We need to start utilizing that dirt, smooth it, level it, do some grading, get the water off of this place. There's extra parking. Those things is what's, what's kind of on my mind, uh, but I'm not gonna put my name, I'm not gonna put the fairgrounds name out there. Listen, these folks to come in to help us, until we've got a plan. Knowing what this end's doing, and this end's doing, at all times, so that we can save the county money, and not have to go spend $20,000 on the pipe. But the pipe's gonna be an issue. So those things we're gonna have to do. But I would entertain that it may be something that we need to get from you all, your minutes of discussion, to send back to our board, before any decisions are made, so that we know what avenue you're going, so that we don't mix up one another, and take away some of this volunteer stuff and donation stuff. And that's, that's pretty much it. I go, I go back a long ways on the, on the reference. He told me, but Max, Maxie's son, if you ever let the county enact, annex, move everything out there, you're gonna have a headache. It was built by volunteerism and donations. You had the Lions Club, you had individuals that was on the committees, that pockets, people that owned their land, donated that land for a purpose, to have a place for our kids, your kids, to go and not have to go out of tent. You, like I said, you've got one of the best avenues of making money, but we have to get the prioritizing down, get the power took care of, get our water took care of, then start addressing some of those other things, before that we can move on to even beautification. Michelle spoke of, I would love to see the pretty green grass and all this kind of stuff, but the priorities right now, you can't get the people here. If they've been here once, then they've had problems, they've had to set up their generators because we didn't offer them power. You know, just little stuff like that. So I could talk about it all day, I appreciate each and every one of you. For my part of it, if there's anything that I can answer, any questions I will. I thought we was gonna have some more members, but kind of bad for everybody to take off of work.
John, any questions?
Thank you for the input, uh, it's, uh, I'm surprised that, with two Commissioners on your board, that we have a failure to communicate.
I think that's a whole lot done with everything anymore, not, not throwing off on these two, but every, every organization, we have to have communications, and it, it's failing between all those, our group too.
That it, John? Michelle? Timmy?
Uh, yeah, I think he's made some very valid points. I think in all walks of life, communication is our best friend, but in my business, I always say that. But, uh, I think that's, you know, that's our asset, and if we could have good communication between each other, and as we move forward, I, I've always said- I, I've always said, there's a great opportunity over there. And it's already good, it's already good, but it can be better. And I agree with you a hundred percent on that. While we're talking about that and me trying to figure out, so when we, when a group comes and they want to use our fairgrounds and they apply, I guess they apply, they go through Randy, Randy, always Randy, not the fairgrounds committee, Randy, okay? And so they write checks to Allegheny County, buyer, pay schedule, whatever. So basically, the county is who, is the avenue they go through. I thank you, Jimmy, for coming up here and.
Well, and not, and, and not to, to, I don't want to do this, I need to back up. I don't want to bash because of the fact that you served on it very little time, but I'm talking back over the years as well as today. You know, the communication's got, it's got to happen from everybody. And I don't know how you want to do it. I know that the last meeting that we had, I asked, you hadn't got there yet, but I'd, I'd asked Bobby, the only thing that we've got that, that I have is I want you to take back that we've got to have communications. There has to be. In what form? I don't know whether it's going to be, like I say, your specific minutes involving the fairgrounds or what, because, I mean, it's, it's hard to do, it's hard to do when you're, when you're out here beating the bush, the brush, trying to get volunteers to donate tractor, to donate motor grader, those or whatever. It's hard to do and they pull up and say, "Well, this has already been done," or, "I've heard that this was already in the works to be done." So, you know, we just got to all be on the same page. And I thank each and every one of you.
Wait just a minute, Mr. Carter?
The only thing I would say in, in response to what Commissioner Timmy, you, you asked, the, the application process that you ask about does go through the rec department. That is the revenues the county receives. But as far as some of the events, whether it be admission or whether it be vendor booths or whatever the different components are, those are different because sometimes the fairgrounds advisory committee themselves recognize that. But all applications based on the rental of the facilities go through the recreation department.
And all that money's, if I'm wrong, that money is that we do receive goes directly right back into the fairgrounds, you know, for maintenance, basically. So.
And the only other thing that I'll mention, and there's a lot of good ideas and maybe sharing of minutes or of course, you know, the, I guess the difference in the minutes or the counties are listed on the website too, so they're accessible, whereas the fairgrounds are not. But, but the only other thing that I could sit here and think about is maybe, I don't know if I'm going to get a frown from one side or the other, but, you know, after, I'm not familiar with how often the fairgrounds committee meets. I don't know the schedule. I do know the schedule of the board of commissioners. So, you know, one thought is we have different groups that come in and provide updates to whatever they represent. I understand that, that the fairgrounds advisory board just went through elections, I believe, if I was.
Getting ready to.
Getting ready to. So maybe it becomes a responsibility of the chair, whoever that may be, to come in and update the board accordingly and vice versa whenever, you know, maybe the fairgrounds advisor group doesn't meet for every two months or whatever the schedule is, but whomever is representing the board of commissioners provides that update. I mean, there's different ways to do it without necessarily killing trees sometimes.
I'm on board with that.
It should be a given that when these meetings do happen, that somebody says, "Okay, here's what we've talked about, what it has to do with the fairgrounds, and this is where the board of commissions are." And then the other, and vice versa. So, yeah, there has to be a little bit of communication back and forth because I'm not sure we'll get it all on just minutes, like reading our minutes and reading your minutes. So I think that would be great.
And I appreciate the ones that volunteered to, to serve because, you know, we've got to have liaisons from you all to, to come back to you, to know, you know, is it a good time to come and talk about this or talk about that or whatnot? It's just good business.
I'd like to ask you a question, Deb. Do you want, do you want to say anything?
Yes, you can talk your.
Okay.
I suggest you depart.
On this, on the, some of your thoughts as the ag advisory committee, could you come up with a list of whatever, five or ten or whatever that you think is a priority?
Yep.
And then what you might add in there that is something that volunteers could do or the county and volunteers could do together? And then I think over the next few meetings, our board is going to come up with a list of things that we would like to incorporate and get those two lists together. And if A on your list, A on our list meets, then we're, we're good. And then if you've got three or four that's not on our list, then we need to talk about it and try to get those priorities together because the vast majority of what's going to happen at the fairgrounds is going to cost money. And that's going to come from our representative, just like the rec center deal is going to come. So, you know, you're talking about working together. I think if, if the board would agree with that, that would be a good start. The other thing is that I think if there's an agenda printed before we have our ag meeting that Michelle, I mean, that we can get together and know what's going to happen at the meeting, we can better prepare ourselves. Last few meetings, there's been no agenda. I was told the last meeting was going to be about the apple pie festival. We didn't spend five minutes on the apple pie festival. It was an hour of back and forth between, really between me and your board. So I think an agenda would help everybody that would know what was going on at the meeting.
And all that should have come to play after, after we get the elections done and, and get a new process of doing things. Won't be no problem.
Question, Bob. Are we talking about ag committee or fairgrounds committee?
I mean, the fairgrounds committee, I'm sorry. I got, I got an invitation to an ag event just a minute ago. Fairgrounds committee, advisory board. Deb? Thank you.
Everything that he said is true and needs to be addressed. My main concern, and I want to thank Michelle for coming to our executive board meeting last week. It seems that the kitchen plans have been evolving exponentially for weeks here. And I, I'm still not convinced that you have a final plan yet. I mean, I, I know you have a final concept. I'm not sure that I know what your final plan is. And my main concern, as far as the fairgrounds board goes, is we're the ones that put on the fried apple pie festival. And if we don't have a warming kitchen for the fried apple pie festival, we can't have it. We'll have to look to move it. So I guess I'm looking for assurance as to how the plan is going to go and where the warming kitchen is going to be, if you know.
I just have a clarification question. How much was the old kitchen used for the apple pie festival this last event?
Well, we used it to warm the apple pies to give to the judges. So for the contest, it was used continuously all day long.
Just for the contest?
Yeah.
And it was, what was used, the microwave or the oven?
The microwave.
Okay.
We brought in our own microwave.
Brought in your own microwave?
Yeah. Now, I got thinking this morning that I, I had run into Michelle at the fairgrounds on Saturday, and she said that the latest plan was to put the warming kitchen in the back utility room where the electrical panel is. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't be more practical to try to put it right in front of the door, next to the bleachers, between the bleachers. I, I mean, when you, I guess the question is, when you put the addition on the back, are you going to shut that door or take it out because you don't want people walking back there, right?
Michael, you go ahead.
So first of all, note, do, so the door, so the storage area where the electrical panels, to my memory, is on the right-hand side as you walk down toward the back of the building.
It's at the, yeah.
That is not where the warming kitchen was going to go.
Okay.
That area was going to be identified as storage.
Right.
And the hallway created to allow for the restrooms to have an internal ability to utilize them.
Right. That was my original understanding.
What we had talked about in the meeting that you were in was utilizing that storage area, what I would call to the left.
Right.
Where those double doors are.
Right.
And I think I even referenced there being a cowl or something in there.
Yep.
So, and that's when we started talking about, you know, the ability here or the ability there. I mean, in, in my mind, I, I have a pretty good understanding of how that wall is going to be constructed, what's going to be utilized off the hallway, what the panel area will serve as. I mean, I understand that. True, we had not thought about providing some type of space for a microwave, and I think we even discussed that in the meeting that we had. But I do think there's, there's room to look at that and consider that. Now, to say that it goes in that corner at that angle that this proponent, I don't, I mean, that, that wasn't in our initial plan. So your thought about on the other side of the, what I'd call the big partition walls or whatever could certainly work, but I don't want that to be the reasoning for, you know, the, the apple pie festival to cancel. And I don't think anybody does. That, to me, is a small enhancement into, into what we are contemplating for that building.
Well, we really can't have an apple pie festival if we can't have access to water and refrigeration and that kind of thing.
And I get that, but what you just mentioned was a need for a microwave.
Right.
Now we've got a microwave, water, and other things. So, and I think that's what we talked about in our, because when you said you brought your own microwave, I think the thought was, oh, we could just set up a microwave somewhere. That, that was, that's a misunderstanding.
That's a misunderstanding.
What that room would allow, and I believe David Spicer even made the comment, was the ability to form drainage to be able to allow that.
Right.
So, I, I think it can be addressed. I don't think it's a costly measure. I think that it can be done relatively at, at a low cost. It's just, it wasn't included in the original design.
Okay. So I guess the question is, can it be included in the final design? When will the final design be available?
There is no, this isn't an engineered drawing.
Right.
Okay? This, this is a, a description of how many blocks going to be laid, what's going to be put there. I mean, we're not hiring an engineer to come in and tell us we need a raised floor to accommodate for drainage. We, we have staff that know those things.
Right. But if you can't, if you can't tell us that we're going to have access to the things that we need to have the fried apple pie festival, then how can we go ahead and plan the fried apple pie festival? We only have five months. That's not a long time.
I don't recall telling you you couldn't have access to that.
Well, the wall is going to go up and the kitchen is going to be built and has to be done by July 1st, right?
Well, it would be done before then.
Okay. But, so that's going to cut off our access to the kitchen. So am I getting a promise that we're going to get what we need?
Group right here makes the decisions on promises.
I guess it's the question.
I provide the input.
I think it's, I think from a building standpoint, it can be accommodated. It's just a matter of, you know, yeah, this is first that, I, I did realize there was a little bit, there probably needs to be some accommodation for some of the things you all used in the kitchen, but the water thing, yes, it's going to be a little more complicated. But I, I don't see any reason why it can't be accommodated. And it can be. It's just a matter of trying to figure out where we want to put it, where's the best place for it. And like you said, we don't have a plan or a design, so it'd be something that we'll work on. That's all I can say.
And, and sitting here thinking about it, you know, we are going to put a raised floor in that kitchen area to accommodate drainage.
Yeah.
In and out. That floor is, is right up to that other side of the bleacher area that you're talking about. So that's something we could look at incorporating the raised floor as opposed to incorporating a whole new system, is being able to tie it through that wall.
We're talking about one sink.
One sink.
One sink, and we're talking about a place for a microwave, no oven.
No oven. No, you'd need some, several plugs to plug in a coffee pot and a refrigerator and.
A refrigerator.
Yeah, I don't see that.
Which is there.
Yeah, with what we're.
The refrigerator's there, correct?
Right.
So.
It was, what you'd asked the other night was for hot water, refrigerator, microwave, a sink, an electrical outlet.
Right. A countertop to put all it on, put all of that stuff on.
Me, I just don't see that. That's, that's a real, real tiny, tiny, simple deal. And I, I see it as a responsibility as we're doing this to, to make sure that some of those other parts can be used, so it's very doable.
I don't see that as an issue. And the current configuration is pretty much open now with the, with the countertop space and that, so I don't see that to be an issue.
So perhaps we could maybe make a field trip out there so we could look at the space and see what would best suit the, then the fairgrounds board? What do you think? I mean, it, the two places, the original place that you said, you know, with the double doors and all that kind of stuff. I did what I said I was going to do, and I notified the quilt guild that they might be losing their storage, so they're on you.
But I have a question about that. Which, and, and let me play the dumb card for a minute because I don't know what's happened in the past. I'm not, I, I'm not fully cognizant as to why we're storing things for these type of events anyway. And I don't mean that negative. I don't want somebody to come in here and needle me. But I'm saying that I, I don't know why we're, we're. But I'm saying that I, I don't know why we're, we're providing storage to a group for an event, I don't know that.
I am not a member of the Quilt Guild. I just happen to know those ladies. And for the Fiber Fest, I went out and bought a trailer to put all my stuff in. So, because that's ridiculous to think that you guys would provide storage for that.
And I don't mean any disrespect when I say
No, I know.
To anybody who's listening either, but that I don't understand.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's really all I am concerned about is the location of the warming kitchen and that we'll be able to have it all done before the Fried Apple Pie Festival.
So, I, I think like Michael and Timmy, we're on the maintenance of the buildings together, and I don't see any of this as being a major problem that, that Mike, that David Spicer, Timmy can't handle, you know, and coming up with some type of location for you that's convenient. I, I would never consider canceling the apple pie because you didn't have a microwave and a sink and refrigerator. We'll, we'll be sure that that
Good.
Those outlets are there. And I don't know about, we'll just have to work on it.
Well, it, it would be much appreciated because it's going to ma, it would make the construction alone is going to be an impediment to everything that's going on out there right now. I mean, how I'm going to reconfigure my vendors for the Fiber Fest? I can't really tell you until I know what it looks like.
I do have one more question. So, while we were talking about the warming kitchen and stuff, and I know your focus is around the apple pie festival, so is there any other event through the rest of the year that, that the old kitchen was used? Like for what?
For the Fiber Fest, the reason that we are able to attract the vendors that we do from as far away as Florida and Louisiana and all that is because they love it here. They love Sparta, they love the town, and they love the way that we take care of them at the festival. So, my crew takes their lunch orders. We provide snacks and coffee, all for free, water, popsicles, all the stuff that they need to make their life happy. And they tell me every year, I don't care if we don't make any money here, we're still coming back because this is the best festival out there. And the reason, and part of the reason is because of that kitchen that everybody kind of congregates in. And, you know, we buy a couple hundred dollars worth of snacks and coffee and stuff, and they love it. I mean, and those, those little things really make a big difference.
Snacks and coffee, you don't really cook anything?
We don't cook anything, no. I know that, um, I don't remember what event it was, but the Partnership for Children was selling food out of that kitchen for one event I was at. I don't remember what it was.
They done spaghetti and pancakes, and they made it in the facility. And to add, if I may, the partnership, oh.
Please do.
Not that my opinion is, but the partnership does use the kitchen quite often when they do hold events. And they do hold multiple events throughout the year. They do a big Christmas event. They do a back-to-school event where they do provide food. So they do use that kitchen. And, you know, we, we hold, you know, private parties and we hold events there. And so when, you know, individuals privately come and they rent out the Black Building, they do use that kitchen. We've had a few calls, Randy and myself, that, you know, the oven wasn't plugged in because they couldn't use the oven. So, I mean, is it used all the time? I would say not, but it is a benefit to have in that facility. And I feel like that people who do rent it are very appreciated to have that there, whether it to be to heat up something or to cook something. So I do think that that is beneficial. Thank you.
I don't think the, I don't think stove, my knowledge, is used very often. Actually, stove, microwave, refrigerator to keep things cool, put water in. Snacks and stuff they use, but as far as the oven goes itself, they're probably about the only ones that uses it.
You could probably get away with a air fryer oven type of deal, something a little more up to date and, you know, plug-in burner or something. If you wanted to go that way.
It's something, I think, to compile all that information to see if we fix an area for a place for a microwave. Do we need to have a range cord? Do we need to, that's, that's the only reason I was asking, I was just curious.
But I think that that little area off the front of the, the bleachers, in front of the is now, took that door out, that would be a nice little area right there. And it would be convenient because it would be right in the center of the building. And that wouldn't take away from the storage that you need. So.
On any questions, comments? Michelle? Anything else, Timmy? Mr. Carter?
I just, I think before we end, we need to hear that.
Thank you, Deb. Randy?
Hello, just a few things I had wrote down. One is heat in the Black Building. That is a issue in the winter. Because for you to heat that room, you're not going to go there two hours early, turn the heat up, and think you're going to heat it. It's not going to happen. So, we, I actually have a quote here from one of the local companies on heat, which was eighty-two hundred dollars, that's on a hundred thousand BTU system. I know we have to price that out, just give us an idea. My biggest complaint, biggest issues I have at the Black, wintertime's a heat. And I think that's something that, if we're going to rent that and keep that going and hopefully get bigger and better events out there, I, I think that's something we're just going to have to seriously look at to, for people to do that. Also, which we already talked about the small kitchen and having it moved. I did, I did have this on there. And I don't know how old that roof is on that Black Building. Of course, it was there when I got here, but there is a couple places it does leak. I think when we, if we ever put in the hu, heat system, one of the place it does leaks around the pipe, it goes to the ceiling. Bobby had already brought up about the stage of the Fairgrounds. They have replaced the whole tongue. So as far as moving it and move it safely now, didn't change the weight of it, it is still very heavy. They ripped the green carpet off, they're going to replace the carpet. Whatever boards that was on it was rotten, being replaced. So, we actually have a very functionable stage when the high school gets done with it. Jamie Russell's classes actually doing that. I think Bobby brought this up to the, like, set the Fairgrounds. I think doesn't need to be upgraded for the events that we're having. Electricity, talking to some electricians and others to get more unit sockets down there, we're going to have to have Blue Ridge Electric put in more poles. We can't do no more than what's on the poles that we presently have. But if we put more poles at the Fairgrounds, then of course they can provide more electricity. Just hit on this a little bit. We do, we are getting a new speaker system at Fairgrounds, which was fortunately paid by the TDA. March, I'm sorry.
May I ask a question? While you're addressing the PA system, that's something that we talked about at the, at the Fairgrounds meeting the other night. Will the soundboard be able to be used by another group that comes in that has their own microphones, their own whatevers? It has to be explained?
I will have the soundboard. That soundboard's in a hard carrying case, soft carrying case, whatever you want to call it. And for you to get that deposit, is one of the things we had talked about. A couple of things we talked about in the Fairgrounds Board meeting. Advisory Board was possibly getting two or three people locally that knows stuff about the mixing boards and, and all that stuff. And let these other groups that's going to be renting hire them to run our system, which they would be trained by this company that's installing the system, which would hopefully prevent the abuse part of, of our system. And hopefully keep us having a whole lot less problems out there. To do that, just one of the things that we had. But, you know, if that's not a route that we go, I feel like we're going to have to look at what a soundboard costs. If it's seven hundred dollars or a thousand dollars, just saying. To replace that.
If somebody has their own soundboard, can they plug into our system?
Well, I
I, I think these are, I think deposits and I think fee structures and I think all of that comes about later in the year for the board to consider. And even the implementation of outside, you know, abilities as well. You know, Heather and I were sitting here talking about the, the pros and cons of having, you know, three people designated to run it. So there's that kind of discussion that needs to continue on outside of just here. And, and the only thing that I'll add, two things. One, fifteen minutes, you've got a board meeting. And two, is we've talked about this HVAC for months now, if not years. And again, you know, I can play these cards, I just keep hearing about it. I just keep hearing about it. Well, we also, if the board remembers, we had a meeting with the TDA. And the TDA talked about how that could be a possible thing that they could provide funding for to enhance that Black Building for a list of things longer than my arm. Look, it's wintertime. If, if, if we need to work out the details, if there's any details to work out about the kitchen heating versus the whole building heating, we can do that, but I don't know why we don't just go ahead and apply for funding through the TDA for, because it's already been identified through Heather that, that if the TDA does it, they don't have to follow the same procurement that the county does. So if we provide them with that estimate and they go to whoever and say, is this still good or what is it? And they provide those funds, as I recall, we don't have to worry about that through our procurement process. And nonetheless, in this instance, it's below the thirty thousand dollar threshold anyway. So, I don't know when the TDA meets next, April is the finance person for that group.
The second Thursday in January.
I would say that our mid-month, or, I guess this is the mid-month, but our first meeting in December, that we authorize, just as we did the sound system, to apply for funding from the TDA for that HVAC system and get that cooking. Because, again, I don't, we spend a lot of mud around here.
One more thing, because most everything else has already been discussed. The entrances, the, the, you know, all that. But one of the things that you had brought up about the water standing, you know, I think we need to get it re-crowned so that the water can drain and get dirt. Right now, the dirt's not the best dirt in the world. It's been used and used and used, and it's dished out from other events and people coming in and not crowning it back. And so, you know, that's one of the things I think we do need to do is have it crowned back and dirt brought in and, and so that we can, because it can come a small rain and water will stay in there for, for a week. And, and not, it just stands. So, that's the only other thing I really had.
John, questions? Michelle? Timmy? That it, Randy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know the time's running short and probably at another meeting and when the Finance Committee gets going about fee structures and how that's handled, the electric bill, this propane bill that's so high, I think we'll address all those in the finance area. Anything to add, Mr. Carter?
I think we've had two good discussions today, that's all I'll add.
I'd like to thank both of y'all for attending, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And there's another meeting in December with the
December.
With the Fairgrounds Committee. Do you know what that date, is it going to be changed or?
Don't know.
Okay.
We'll get a new officer to figure out what happens if we go to it.
It should be the twelfth, I'm not sure if that's supposed to be.
Okay. Thank you all, appreciate it. Chris, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Randy, thank you. We'll call this work session to a close. Got nine minutes. When do they meet?
It'll be the second Thursday in They don't meet in December.
Not in December.
That's correct.
But if we could authorize them to make the application tonight or modify the agenda, we'd vote on it, we'd discuss it.
It's been brought up.
Heather?
Yeah.
That's okay?
You do whatever you want with your agenda, I don't care.
All right, so, since, since I've got to open this show up tonight,
I'll make a motion.
So when we get to the